Welcome, everyone, to the regular city council meeting of the City of International Falls. It's December 16th, 2019. If you would all please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please note that all members of the council are present. Our first item on the agenda is to approve the agenda, and I am requesting that we add to the agenda the grant request from the Kuching Technology Initiative.
So moved.
So we have a motion to accept the... Oh, I'm sorry. We had one other... We had two other items that were not published, too. One is to authorize airwayed training aids in the opening of bids, and the other one would be authorized travel and training expenses for six ambulance employees to attend the 2020 Arrowhead EMS conference in Duluth.
I will amend my motion.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Deitch. We have a motion and second. Any discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
There is three additions to the consent agenda, license renewals as well.
Yeah, and I'll point those out under the consent agenda.
Good.
Hearing no other discussion? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. Motion carries. Next is the approval of the minutes for our regular city council meeting on December 2nd, Chair would entertain a motion to accept those minutes?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Buller.
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Kraus. Any discussion or questions on those minutes? I just want to make one thing clear from the last council meeting. I also have it in my mayor's report. I may have misspoke at the last council meeting during the discussion of extending the Kita cold box payments, and I had said, hoping we will get the money from JLR. I did clarify that statement in discussion, saying that there's always a timeframe between billing and payment. This was also corrected by Mr. Sutherland of JLR, stating that as of September 30th, all bills have been paid in full to Kita, and I want to make very clear to everybody that JLR is not now, nor has it ever been laid on payments. I just want to clarify that because it was a motion of discussion at the last meeting. So with that being said, if there's no other discussion on the minutes from the last meeting, question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. Motion carries, 5-0. Next, we have the December 2nd Truth in Taxation public hearing minutes. Chair would entertain a motion to accept those?
Motion to accept.
We have a motion to accept by Councilor Deitch.
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Nelson. Motion and second. Any discussion? Questions, concerns on the minutes of the Truth in Taxation meeting? Hearing none? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. Motion carries. And finally, we have the Committee of the Whole Minutes from December 9th, 2019, at 4:00 p.m. Chair would entertain a motion to accept those minutes?
So moved.
Okay. Councilor Buller, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Kraus. Any discussion? Hearing none? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. Motion carries. Next, we go to the payments and claims for the City of International Falls. First, we have out of Fund 101, the general fund... I'm sorry. Going to the general fund, $9,951.67 coming from the Water Department, the 601 Fund, $5,559.67, and also from the 603 Sewer Fund of $4,392. To the Permanent Improvement Fund, $66,666.66 being split evenly between the 601 and the 603 Fund, in the amount of $33,333.33. To the capital reserve for capital outlay, the 403 Fund, we will be adding $25,760.42 coming from the 601 Water Fund, $19,136.17, and from the Sewer 603 Fund, $6,624.25 for a total transfers of $102,378.75. Our claims, City of International Falls claims are $217,517.46. Airport Commission claims of $20,614.57, and the Library Board claims of $5,112.88 for a total of accounts payable of $243... No, that was way too little. Your chair would entertain a motion to accept the resolution.
Motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Nelson.
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Buller. Discussion on the payments and claims. Hearing none? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. Motion carries. Next is audience. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda? If not, there's an opportunity at the end of the meeting as well. We'll be moving on to opening bids. Our first bid is to purchase of GetDak V110G5 computer from CDW in the amount of $2,764.99 for ambulance use payable from Fund 202-42010-3090. Chief Manasseh?
As stated in the proposal, we were... When we purchased the four new ambulance computers, I believe it was two years ago, we had used the old ones as spares and backups. Those are all now outdated and not updatable, so we don't have a backup computer from time to time. We do need that extra computer just when we have a crash or something needs to be reinstalled, so it was recommended by IT specialist that we purchase one. He did acquire some quotes, and CDW was the lowest price.
Okay. Any questions for Chief Manasseh? Chair would entertain a motion to accept or deny the request?
Motion to accept.
Okay. We have a motion to accept by Councilor Deitch. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Nelson. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Councilor Kraus?
Please do. You want to respond?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. Motion carries. Next, we have the airway training aids from Seven Sigma Simulation Systems in the amount of $8,910 for ambulance use.
This is something we've been looking at for a couple of years now. Our airway mannequins for advanced airways are really not in great shape, and they're very old, so when we did our capital outlay budget last year, we had put money for miscellaneous ambulance supplies. This was one of the things we had in mind. So we did have Seven Sigma come up and do a demonstration. Their airway devices were very scarily lifelike and anatomically correct, so very great training aids for the paramedics to use. As listed on the proposal, a full adult trainer with carrying case, a pediatric trainer with carrying case, and then a cricoid and suturing trainer kit as well. Total project was $8,910. And again, we do have adequate funding in the capital outlay line item. That is, again, what we had... One of the items we had budgeted for in this year.
Okay. Any questions for Chief Manasseh? Okay. Chair would entertain a motion to accept or deny the request for the training aids.
Motion to accept.
We have a motion to accept by Councilor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Buller. Any discussion? How old are the old ones that we've had?
I honestly don't know.
That old?
They're... Yeah, early 2000s.
Okay.
They've been here as long as I have.
Do you... Does this facility provide training to, like, all the other CPR events in town, or is it just for your own paramedics?
We do CPR training. These particular airways are for advanced airways, so paramedic use only. The correction. Paramedics will benefit the most from them. We can use them for EMT training as well, but probably not outside of our department.
Any other discussion? Hearing none? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. Motion carries. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
I am going to sneak this one... The... No, wait. No, I'm not. Adopt... Our next item is old business. I am trying to slowly rush through this meeting because I have to go to my daughter's Christmas concert, so... Adopt the resolution to approve the final levy and tax collectible in 2020, and approve the 2020 budget for the City of International Falls.
Motion to approve.
As the Budget and Finance Chair?
As the Chair of the Budget and Finance Committee, I make the motion to approve.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilor Kraus. Do we have a second?
I'll second it for him.
We have a second by Councilor Buller.
You're really humanitarian.
We have a motion and second. Any discussion on the budget? I would just say this, that this year, the budget... I don't want to say it was easier than it has been in the past, but the sales tax definitely is going to be able to help us out a lot moving forward. We are going to be bonding against the sales tax to do projects for the next couple of years. We spent not as much time on the budget as we should have this year, but we were focusing so much on making sure that we had everything in place for the sales tax. And now, next year, when we go into the budget, it's going to be a little bit more difficult for us because we're going to be saving and putting more money aside for our streets, water, and infrastructure than we did this year. It was a very interesting thing. We did finish this budget the day before Mayor Anderson passed away. It was his last official action as our city council, so it was a tough budget. We did get through it, and we are ready to do some big business in 2020, so... With that, question?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And I will vote yes. Motion carries. Next item is to remove from the table the consideration for the city council meeting agenda for 2020.
Motion to remove it from the table?
We have a motion to remove that item from the table from Councilor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Deitch. Any discussion on taking it off of the table? Hearing none? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. Motion to remove from the table. So now, the item is before us, which is the 2020 city council schedule. We did have a committee of the whole meeting, and we did discuss this particular issue at length. The goal that we have for this city council is to have more participation from residents, community members, and people that are just genuinely concerned on what we're doing and how we're doing it. We listen to what they have said. We are willing to change our council meetings to 5:30 for the first three months of the year and see if that changes any of the participation from our residents. And then, after those three months, if we don't see any more participation and more people coming to the meetings, we may take that time and change back to 4:30. But we do want to be more open and transparent of what we're doing, although all these meetings are on KCTV, and the Journal does a very good job about reporting it, and the radio does a fantastic... KGHS, KSDM, does a fantastic job putting it on the air. There's something about just being in the room while we're having the conversations that may spark someone to want to give their input, so we want to give them that opportunity. So that's what we had discussed. So the chair would entertain a motion to accept the council meeting schedule for 2020 with the first three months of the year at 5:30, and then, after that, we would be willing to change it back to 4:30 if we don't see participation.
Move.
We have a motion by Councilor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Nelson. Any discussion? Hearing none? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I will vote yes. Motion carries, 5-0. Next, we will go to the consent agenda. The first item on the consent agenda is to approve the 2020 license renewals. We had a couple that were added on to it, so the first one is going to be Anthony Wolden with the snowplow license, Glenn Spears with the snowplow license, Stavish Plowing with the snowplow license. License renewals, Cine5, a restaurant license and a theater license, Huffaker Lawn and Snow Service LLC, a snowplow license, Ohana Homes Property Management, a snowplow license, Rolinda Ferguson, doing business as Northern Zen Massage Therapy, a massage license, Snickers Concrete, a snowplow license, and True North Properties LLC, a snowplow license. We need to approve the designation of our polling places. East Ward would be the Evangelical Covenant Church at 1631 First Avenue East. Center Ward would be Bob Wall's Memorial Union Hall at 509 Third Street, and the West Ward would be St. Thomas Aquinas Hall at 810 Fifth Street. Approve LMCIT liability coverage waiver form not to waive limits on the municipal tort liability and authorize the signatures. Approve license fees of the city attorney, $5 an hour, effective January 20th... Or I'm sorry, January 1st, 2020. And authorize travel and training expenses for six ambulance employees to attend the 2020 Arrowhead EMS conference expo in Duluth. Chair would entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Move to accept the consent agenda.
Okay. We have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Second.
And a second. Question?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And I'll vote yes. Motion carries. Next, we'll go on to the 2020 renewal of licenses that include tobacco or alcohol. First, we have Bootleggers Fuel and Liquor. They're requesting a cigarette license, gasoline pump license, and restaurant license. Bootleggers Liquor LLC, an off-sale liquor license. Border Bar and Pizza House, a 3-2 off-sale license. Pool table license, off-sale liquor license, on-sale liquor license. Restaurant license, sundae liquor license, jukebox license, and amusement games license. Border Oil Company, doing business as The Jug, a cigarette license and an off-sale liquor license. Farahas Enterprises LLC, doing business as Barahas Mexican Grill, an on-sale liquor license, restaurant license, sundae liquor license, and I...
Itinerant?
Yeah, itinerant restaurant license. Hanson's Outpost Incorporated, an amusement games license, off-sale liquor license, on-sale liquor license, restaurant license, sundae liquor license, pool table license, and jukebox license. Riverfront Bar and Grill, sundae liquor license, restaurant license, jukebox license, and an on-sale liquor license. VFW Post 2948, a pool table license, club license, gambling license, restaurant license, sundae liquor license, and a jukebox license. And Voyager Restaurant LLC, a 3-2 on-sale license and a restaurant license. Just read that whole page. All right. Your chair would entertain a motion to approve the license request for 2020.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Buller. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. We have a second by Councilor Deitch. Discussion? Hearing none? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I will abstain. 4-0 with one extension. Motion carries. Next, we will go to the... Approve the city support for activities for the 16th Annual Arrowhead Ultra 135 on January 27th, 2020, Jackie and Ken Kruger. Welcome.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. For those of you that might not know, the Arrowhead Ultra 135 is one of the 50 hardest races on Earth. It's the end of January, 60-hour race from International Falls to Fortune Bay on the Arrowhead Snowmobile Trail, run by a car or ski. This year, we had 192 racers sign up in record time. We filled our roster in just a couple hours. Last year's race occurred during the polar vortex, so it was quite amazing. We were... The race and the city were featured on BBC Live, National Public... NPR, NPR. We were in New York Times three times, Associated Press, CNN, including CNN London Live, Time, Men's Health, just crazy. So it was... Went really well. We have racers from Brazil, Canada, France, Italy, United States, Belarus, and Sweden, and 27 states, so we get quite a mix of people here. And in the past, this is the 16th year of the race. My wife and I are race directors for the race, and the support we would like to have from the city is the use of Cary Park at 7:00 a.m. for the starting, so racers come in there and sign... Get registered so we know they're there and starting. We hang a banner across the street at Smokey Bear Park. We've had fireworks the past couple of years. If we could do that again, that's awesome. And we also get a bullhorn normally from the fire department just for Monday morning, and the police have covered the first couple road crossings for us just for safety that Monday morning. All right. Does anyone have any questions for Ken or Jackie?
Did you know that the race finishes at Fortune Bay on the same crabby Monday that I go there every single year?
No.
They have all-you-can-eat crab on Monday, and as the racers are coming in, I'm eating crab, and they are looking cold.
All right. Chair would entertain a motion. Yes?
Ken, what timeframe do you have? After the race, when can they register for next year?
September 1st. It's always been September 1st.
September 1st is when they register for the...
Yeah, and we filled up... I think our rookies filled up in four hours, and our vets about 30 hours. Yeah. So they have to sign up early so they know to get in to have time to train and prepare and get all their gear and stuff.
Great.
So great. It's just so great.
And it is... I mean, it is a good thing for the town.
Absolutely.
I know last year, some of our folks couldn't even find rooms in town. They had to go in Fort Francis and whatever, so... And at Fortune Bay, you see them at the buffet and...
You eat crab?
I've never been kicked out. Had a hard time getting out before.
Oh, really? That's just the ladies. All right. So the request is to have Cary Park opened at 6:00 a.m., banner over Smokey Bear, police coverage at the first road crossings, a bullhorn from the fire department, and fireworks. Chair would entertain a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Kraus. We have a second by Councilor Buller. Motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing none? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I will vote yes. Motion carries. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Great job. Thank you.
Next, approve signatures on updated memorandum of understanding and agreement between Rainy River Community College and the International Falls Police Department. Brad Crasway.
Impressive event. Welcome.
Mayor Drogba, thanks for having me. I'm basically here just for questions. This is a previously adopted MOU between the college and the city police department. The only things that were changed were some position descriptions were changed, as well as the dates of when... And it's required of us by the state of Minnesota to be able to update this every two years.
Okay.
I hope it's in front of you now.
It is. Yes. Does anyone have any questions for Brad? If you've had a chance to look over the memorandum?
Mayor?
Yes?
I would just add that the police chief is supportive of adopting the memorandum of understanding. He's had an opportunity to review it. He couldn't be here this evening because he is covering a shift because we're short staff, so he's on a call or else he'd be here, but he's supportive of adoption.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? I'm sorry I had to come out for that.
It's all right.
All right. So the chair would entertain a motion to approve the signatures on the memorandum of understanding. So we have a motion by Councilor Buller. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Kraus. Discussion? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. Motion carries. Thanks, Brad.
Thank you much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have approved the agreement of assessment and waiver of irregularity and appeal with James Crawford, city administrator.
Mayor, this is a... Just a form. It's a standard form that the League of Minnesota Cities has put out there, and we use that form for adoption in this particular situation. Mr. Crawford had a garage that burned on Mother's Day, and this is an opportunity for him to waive and allow himself any irregularities in an appeal process, or rather, in an assessment process, for us to engage a contractor. And the last time I spoke with him, he had a bid for $2,000 from Andy Holler. Andy Holler is a licensed contractor with the city, doing a lot of our repair and maintenance work on blighted properties, and so this would authorize us to assess the cost for him to remove the burned garage and demolition debris from the site and then assess him over a three-year period, and he's granting approval. And as you can see, it's been signed by Mr. Crawford, as well as the credit union that has an existing mortgage outstanding on the property. So we're asking that the council adopt this, and then we'll move forward with the assessment process after the work's been completed.
All right. Chair would entertain a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Deitch. Do we have a second to approve?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Kraus. Any discussion? Hearing none? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I will vote yes. Motion carries. Next is a... Next is to consider a request to... Next is a, next is to consider a request to approve a license encroachment agreement at 825 Third Avenue for private landscape improvements. The reason this came up on the agenda is we had a discussion about this at our Committee of the Whole meeting. Councilor Deech had an emergency and ran a little bit late, and we did have a split vote at the Committee of the Whole meeting on how to move forward on this. So we'd just like to have another conversation and see if we're going to allow or deny the agreement. Ken, can you give us a little background again?
Just briefly, Mayor and Council, there's a property owner that would like to do some improvements along the corner of their property. The building's at a zero lot line setback next to the street. There's some existing blacktop surface there that they'd like to have the city remove and then be able to plant some trees, shrubs and other kinds of private improvements in the right-of-way. And so this, if the council would move forward with a license encroachment agreement, it would allow that person to make those improvements. And I think the vote at the Committee of the Whole was 2-4, 2 against and one person abstaining, so it did not pass.
Does anyone have any questions of staff or, we'll have discussion before we make a motion on to accept or deny. Any questions that we have or to staff in any capacity?
I think it was pretty much covered in the committee meeting.
Leon, do you have any questions?
I'm going to abstain when it comes because I did miss the majority of the conversation.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Councilor Deech, you do have an opportunity to ask any questions at this time if you'd like.
Right, I know, I do.
Okay. So Chair would entertain a motion to accept or deny at this time.
Motion to deny.
We have a motion to deny by Councilor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Bowler. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Please.
Although I would agree that working on this property and beautifying it wouldn't be a bad thing for the city, but I do believe that it sets a precedent and it's a very slippery slope. And to ask the city to remove concrete or pavement from an existing road right-of-way is a, I just don't think that we can necessarily do that. And I don't want the city to be held liable for any trees or shrubs or anything that are going to get plowed over with snow and other things. I just don't see it as a, I just don't see it as a good thing. So I'm against it.
Any other discussion?
I too am against it, but for slightly different reasons. I look at what we're doing on 53 and all of the work that's going to be going on. If we were to allow this easement, this is right off of 53, essentially on a city street that has no setback, there's going to be work that's going to be done on that road all summer long. And I love the idea that the person wants to beautify the property. And we have people that beautify in the right-of-way all the time. There is a difference here because they came to the city. But if we do this and something goes bad, the trees go bad, I know that the thing says that we're not liable, but it's still, we said they could do it. So I really appreciate what the building owner is trying to do and beautify everything, but it just, it seems like it's just not the right place to do it, so. Any other discussion?
Do we know, he's specifically asking to pull up concrete and plant trees? That's something we know?
Shrubs for sure. Commissioner Brokaw, do you have any additional information?
The concrete, the blacktops. The Batumist would probably be more in place of the sidewalk, goes around the corner of the sidewalk. The curb radius goes around east and then there's blacktop that would be behind the curb per se. So he just wanted us to remove something, blacktop, so he could have a little bit wider bend.
Oh, he wanted us specifically to remove it? Okay.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay. Hearing none, question?
Abstain.
I'm sorry, can you clarify what the motion was?
Yep, no problem. The motion is to deny the request for a license agreement.
Okay, sorry, aye.
Aye.
And I will vote yes, motion carries, 4-0 with one extension. Next, consider offer to sell and memorandum of conditions to the Minnesota Department of Transportation to acquire a temporary and permanent highway easement from the city for parcel 11 in the amount of $16,200 and authorized signatures.
So moved.
Okay, Councilor Bowler, do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second by Councilor Kraus. Ken, do you want to just give a quick rundown of these three so we have a little background for the media?
Certainly, Mayor. As part of the Highway 53 reconstruction project, they've evaluated their needs for real estate in order to be able to do the construction and reconstruction work. There's three locations in this, along the corridor that the city owns property, and the city needs to grant easements to MinDOT or their contractor, the contractor awarded to do the work. They need easements from the city, so there's three locations. As you pointed out, parcel 11 is one. The value of that easement offered would be $16,200 paid to the city, and it's for two locations at the intersection of Fourth Street and Second Avenue, near where the Chamber of Office and CVB buildings, offices are. So where the Welcome to Minnesota sign is located, they want a permanent easement in order to do the work. And then there's a small area, and on your map, it's shown as a green parcel where there'd be a temporary easement just during the construction period. And so the combined total of value for those two easements is $16,200. So if there's a motion to approve, which there is, and signatures are authorized, we'll sign these easement documents and return them to MinDOT. And then they'll have the authority they need to be able to do the reconstruction work in that area when the work commences.
Okay. Thank you, please.
Do we need to do these as three separate motions?
Let's do them all three separate.
All three separate, okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries. Next is similar to the last one. This is for a temporary easement from the city to the Department of Transportation, parcel 8, in the amount of $500 and authorized signatures.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Okay.
We have a second by Councilor Bowler. Any discussion? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries. Next is the same general thing. It's the offer to sell a memorandum from the city for Minnesota Department of Transportation, parcel number 49, in the amount of $2,500 and authorized signatures.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Kraus. We have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Deech. Any discussion? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries. Next is a resolution to establish mutual state aid street, Sixth Avenue West from 11th Street, which is Cache 48 to Sixth Street. It's .34 miles, and there is additional revenues that come to the city by making this adoption. Ken, do you have any additional information on that?
No, I don't, Mayor. There's, as you pointed out, there's additional mileage that we can include as part of the municipal state aid system. And by virtue of having this road designated as a municipal state aid street, we would receive monies from the Minnesota Department of Transportation to do any repair, maintenance and reconstruction work on that road through the municipal state aid system.
Okay. Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution.
So moved.
Ooh, Councilor Deech beat them out. Do we have a second? Councilor Kraus.
Councilor Kraus.
We have a motion and second, any discussion? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries. Next is consider a letter agreement with key advocates dated August 19, 2019, on behalf of the Highway 53 Task Force, effective January 1, 2020, and authorized signatures. It's $4,000 for the city to do this. Ken, do you want to give a little bit of background?
Sure. The, Mayor and Council, the, there's been a number of governmental jurisdictions that have pooled resources to engage a firm to assist in conveying information to local jurisdictions here in northeastern Minnesota, as well as lobby on our behalf to try and get some federal funding. And so Key Advocates has been engaged for a number of years to work on our behalf, and there was a number of jurisdictions along the Highway 53 route. And part of this was funding the Falls to Falls Highway Corridor, which was Chippewa Falls, Wisconsin to International Falls, Minnesota. Congressman Oberstarr was instrumental in getting that funding. I believe the total amount of funding available was as high as $50 million to do that work. And a lot of their focus has been to try and extend four-lane highways as far as possible from the Duluth area going both directions. And so, you know, we've been successful getting four-lane highways all the way to Virginia and a little bit north of there. Some of the work that you saw being done this past summer with bypass lanes for passing were done as part of those monies too. And so the final three jurisdictions that are engaged in this process have been St. Louis County, Koochichin County, and then the city of International Falls is the final destination. So the city of Virginia was instrumentally involved, but when they got a highway to their jurisdiction, they kind of fell off. So the cost is about $12,000 a year. It's paid $1,000 a month. The total cost to the city is about $4,000, a third of that expense.
Please, so did we have, did I hear at one of the meetings that original fund was used up now with these passing lanes?
I believe that the funding is nearly, if it's not totally expired, it's nearly gone, yeah, very close to being gone. And so that would be even more reason to have somebody engage like this to see if there's additional funding available. And I know that the Trump administration has talked about a number of public works and public infrastructure programs. And so if there's some, if we can get on the radar screen at a national level, at a federal level, to try and get some funding up in our corridor, that would be something that we would try to do through this Key Advocates group.
And the representative of Key Advocates has spoke with myself and Councilor Bowler and Administrator Anderson, and they are looking at having another meeting with Koochichin County and St. Louis County and having a conversation on how we want to move forward in the next year. We just haven't, we haven't set up that date yet, but I just got an email as recent as Friday, so. And I think I forwarded it on to you, did I? Did you get that copy?
Well, don't worry about it.
I'll be getting it.
I'll make sure you'll get that. So anyways, that's the background on this. And as I understand it, the $50 million was used up. And I think that that conference call that he wants to have us will be with Brian Larson as well from MinDOT to have that conversation, so. Chair would entertain a motion for, to consider the agreement and authorized signatures.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Bowler. Do we have a second?
A second.
A second by Councilor Kraus. Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries. Next is a resolution to approve the 2020 wages and benefits for non-union and seasonal employees effective January 1, 2020.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Bowler. These were all factored into the budget for this next year. This is our union contract. No real discussion necessary, but Ken?
Mayor, I would just point out that this is for the non-union employees and seasonal employees. And so we, this is a 2% increase for 2020. It's modest relative to what I've seen in other jurisdictions, and it's comparable to what we've negotiated in our three collective bargaining agreements. So it's the same. In addition to the 2% wage increase for the non-salaried people, you'll see that there's a $50 per month increase in the health insurance reimbursement. So it goes from $1,250 per month to the city covering as much as $1,300 per month. And again, that's the same amount that we've negotiated in each of our three collective bargaining agreements. The only additional information is that you'll see for summer help and seasonal, on the exhibit for the first year, employees, we would be paying $11.25 per hour. Second year would be $12.25 per hour, a $1 increase. And then the third year, if somebody, or fourth year, if they would be with us that long, it's $13 per hour. So it progresses depending on your amount of time working with the city. I will say that last year, we were at 1025 and 1075, and we're probably under the market for what other companies and people are paying, starting part-time temporary help.
All right, we have a motion and second, any discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries, 5-0. Committee of the Whole recommendation to approve the purchase of five Ram pickup trucks and award it to Whirly Motors at the local low quote of $135,500 for public works use, payable from Fund 402 and Fund 403 capital outlay.
Motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Nelson. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Deech. Discussion?
I think it should be noted that two of the trucks are going to the water department and three to the street department. When you're looking to buy five pickups, one time, everybody's going to wonder where we need five pickups in the street department for.
Right.
But we're placing some pretty shoddy pickups.
And there was one that we were going to get with a four-door cab, is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion and second to accept the low bid quote from Whirly Motors. I'd like it to be known that there was a lower quote out there. It was not local to International Falls. We thought that it was that close that it would be better to award it to a local dealership, so we did make that choice for the five purchases of the trucks. No other discussion, question?
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries. Next is the purchase of two 2020 Ford SUV police pursuit vehicles and award that to Ford Hibbing at a state cost bid of $34,536, payable from Fund 402, capital outlay.
So moved.
So we have a motion from Councilor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Nelson. Any discussion on this? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries. Next is going to be the addition to the agenda, which was the Koochichin Technology Initiative Grant Request. So KTI has been doing a lot of grant requests through our area. They've been able to fund a lot of projects that we've seen. The city directly was a benefit of the Wi-Fi over at Smokey Bear Park. This is another initiative that KTI has came up with. I know that they were looking at trying to do a web portal that would be all-encompassing of the area, but it became too egregious to try to come up with something that fits all models of International Falls, Little Fork, Rainier, Koochichin County. So what I Falls- So what I Fall's, the Koochichin Technology Initiative has done is put together a grant request for a web portal that would be specific to International Falls. It would be very, very similar to Elyite's. If you guys have seen, that gets touted quite a bit in, in the tourism industry for northern Minnesota, is Elyite's came out of the Blandin Project, and it's done wonders for their area. So this would have sections that would be for International Falls, how to, how to pay your water bill, how to get active in the community, just a one-stop shop to be able to go and find out stuff from International Falls. Those are the website features that you see that's on the front page. On the back, it's, it comes out to be almost $25,000. The only cost that would be to the city of International Falls would be for the time of our IT director. There's no direct costs to the city of International Falls. 218, I'm sorry, the KTI grant request would be for $17,125. Small Town Tech would be kicking in $1,000 for web hosting. Small Town Tech would also kick in another $600 for the email hosting in-kind. I Fall's Nice would kick in 5,000, or 500, and the city of International Falls would have five, or $6,000 in-kind labor for, for the IT director's time. Chair would entertain a motion to accept or deny.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Could we ask the IT director?
No. Todd, please come up. And Todd's been going to quite a few of the KTI meetings over the past month and a half, I would guess.
Just your thoughts?
I think it's a good idea. It seems to be very successful for Ely, and it certainly would help to, I don't know, bring more social media presence and allow us to have a way to connect with people other than our city website. But that's more related to government, you know, government function, so I think it's a good idea.
Okay, that's what I need.
Please.
Do you have the time to do it? Do you feel you have time?
I believe I'll have the time to do it. I didn't, I haven't actually read the, the final proposal from, that Ted Saxon was preparing.
Yeah, it was sent to you today, at the same time I got mine. I got it just before I came to the meeting, so I get it.
Okay, so I would like to read it, but I'm, yeah, I believe it's totally doable.
Okay. Motion to approve?
We have a motion to approve by Counselor Kraus.
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Buller. Any additional discussion or questions? Ken?
I have no comments.
Wow. Okay. So we have a, a motion and second before us. Any more, any discussion? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes. Motion carries. Next, reports of the administrator, attorney, department heads.
Mayor, I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and hope to have a happy holiday season. And that would be from the staff to the public as well as the city council. It's a fun time of the year. Secondly, I want to remind the council, and this will probably be new information for you, as you know, we've been looking for 2020 census workers coming up in April and then going through the summer. And there's a, I had left in front of your table a brochure talking about join this 2020 census team. Peter Alexander from the Census Bureau in, in St. Paul will be here at the library on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday of this week. On Tuesday, he'll be here from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. On Wednesday, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And then Thursday, from noon to 6:00 p.m. And census positions are currently paying $19 per hour. And plus, the employee will be reimbursed at the IRS rate of 58 cents a mile for any mileage that they might have to incur to do their census work. And so anybody that's interested in applying can do so at the library. And, and they can come at any time during those hours. You don't have to be there right-of-way. It's not like there's a formal presentation. We'll have some computers available for people who need to apply online. And then, and Mr. Alexander will be there to assist people. And if people have a cell phone, so they can refer to their own email address, apparently that's helpful to go through the application process just to verify it's been received. So we encourage anybody who's interested in, in dedicating some time to assist with the census. It's important because it affects how many legislators we have in Congress representing the state of Minnesota, as well as, there's just a number of, a lot of valuable information that comes out of the census in terms of our incomes, demographics, and all the federal assistance programs, as well as state assistance programs are based on, on that demographic and income data. So it's important to get, and we would welcome anybody who wants to assist with the census this coming year. I would just also draw your attention to, I had left in your boxes today, there's a program for, the advanced program for elected officials that the League of Minnesota Cities put on, and that just came out today, I believe, indicating that there's two sessions coming up this winter. So if anybody wants to attend the advanced session, there's one in Baxter as well as the city of Plymouth. And so the council's already authorized any of you to, to go to those, so I would encourage you to do that. Counselor Nelson might want to go to the newly elected one. I haven't seen any information on that as well, but.
It's the same dates. It's the same dates in Plymouth. All right, do you have a question?
Question on the first one, on the census taking. Is there any place on, on line that if somebody's interested, they can find out what it, what does it exactly consist of? Was how many hours you expected, how many days?
You can get more information, and you can apply online on your own. You don't have to go to the library to get assistance. I've included this brochure here. I don't have the email address, but you can just Google 2020 census and then go through the menu systems that are offered there to see how you can apply and get more information. It, it varies. I mean, we've, they've been here a couple of months ago, and we've got some people who apply, but they're hoping to get as many as, I believe it was 217 applications county-wide to assist with that, and, and they don't have near that number right now, so if there's sixty more people. But anybody can go online to get more information on it.
Good. All right. City Attorney.
Mr. Mayor, Council, first I'd like to thank you for the raise. I don't have anything beyond that, other than, again, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
All right. Department heads, anybody have anything? Okay, you have received your monthly report from the fire and, fire ambulance and the police. Does anyone have any questions on that or need anything pointed out? All right. Mayor, councils, and committees, boards and commissions. Anything?
Nothing.
Plan to use in legislations, meeting tomorrow?
Tomorrow at 5:00 p.m. Right here.
And Recreation Commission is meeting on Wednesday?
At 4:30.
At 4:30 here.
Right here.
All right, well, if we don't have anything else, everyone have a very Merry Christmas, and we'll see you in January at our new time of 5:30. This meeting is adjourned.